This is the Finance Committee. PJ and I are co-chairs. And Joel Lorenz is the expert on most of these things. And PJ is right behind him, and I'm way out there somewhere. The first item of the agenda is Accounts Receivable Collections Policy. This is something we need to work on, and so let's go ahead and talk about it.
In general, from the county, we have some issues that I think we have to clean up our accounts receivable policy on. You know, first of all, the BKB, our external auditors, have just finished their audit of the year. And they're -- two of the topics that they gave the county significant deficiencies on relate to accounts receivables. One, that we're not really going to talk that much about today, it relates to billing at the health center. And what we've been telling people is that issue is going to go away when we have Meditech, you know, their electronic health record system, which now we are on a path to commit to have up and running by June 30th, 2019. So, that one, in talking to the auditors, you know, we're all saying, "Let's get that up and running, and then that issue should go away," because we've been written up a couple times on accounts receivable policies at the health center that are really systems-driven. So hopefully, that one will go away. And then, there was a second material weakness that the external auditors are pulling as a material weak.
Material weakness or significant?
Significant deficiency, I'm sorry. As related to just the receivables in general. And, you know, how they get administered here, and that there's not a whole uniform policy. And that kind of ties into some issues that Mike Dornicky rose during his audit. He did an Accounts Receivable internal audit. And there were some issues rose there. And I think what I'm going to do is just have Mike come up and summarize his report and findings a little bit. And then, based on that, we can go and talk some specifics. Mike, can you come up?
Another fine method you guys said.
So, I guess in a nutshell, as of last week, City of Omaha, Nebraska HHS, and probation owes about $1.9 million.
$1.9?
$1.9. And from what I can tell, they really don't tend to pay us that money. So, my audit concentrates on what are we going to do to get past money? What are we going to do to collect that money? How are we going to go with these people? So, as far as details, I think there's probably here, people here who have a better idea of what.
Before we get into the details, what was your overall perspective on accounts receivable in general?
I would say, except for these three accounts, we do a pretty good job of collecting. There are some procedural issues that we need to work on, as far as according to you, with the county attorney.
So, why do you think BKB is giving us significant deficiencies regarding accounts receivable? What do you think is bothering them?
What I think they -- I haven't really talked to them about the detail behind that. But at least from what I can see, at least in the collections, it's so disparate. There's so many different people billing, different policies, every department. And so, when you have that sort of situation, which is, it's not good. Ten different billing policies.
And, you know, in large organizations, a lot of times, there's more of a consolidated accounts receivable department. Given the county's structures, is that something you think would be feasible for the county?
I think it would take a lot of effort, because I don't think there's anybody stepping forward to say, "We'll take on that responsibility." I think the clerk's office had said something about it, that they need the body. At least one probably should take that on.
And then, if they did that, I mean, would you, would they bring in everybody, like including the Health Department? You know, all those different groups that issue receivables? Is that something that could all be brought in, into one operation?
I suppose it's feasible, but it's difficult, just the way we do things, because, I mean, it's like having a conglomerate. I mean, everybody's got a different business, different business model, different types of operations going on. It's difficult here.
Well, I think that's something I had, I had heard from BKB that this was coming. I haven't seen their, you know, the write-up that's going to show in the single audit. So I think this is something that we have to pursue and have further discussion with, with the Business Department, with the clerk's office, and see what sort of process organizational changes might -- because I think we're going to have to do something to address that statement. Because if you don't, significant deficiencies could potentially turn into material weaknesses.
Yeah. And I never looked at it as an internal audit, but it's, I want to do one. And I think I'm going to have some time now. That maybe might be a start.
That may be something that we put on and have you come back with that. And like I said, you could use the BKB letter. It's kind of a directional point to go.
Yeah, because I really don't know the details that they've written up. And I mean, like I said, I've never done an audit myself on billing, so it's something I needed to.
I have a question. If anybody has a question, walk, raise your hand. Don't let the clerk out. Anyway. I'm curious, is there, is it possible for us to look at National Association of County Officials, Mary Ann, to help with that? Looking to see if there's a model that's being used in county government elsewhere that we might be able to take a look at and see if there's something we could do? Or is that even necessary? We already have an idea, I'm sure, of what has to happen.
That's always a good idea, to do that. That's usually one of the things I do myself, to see if somebody's already done something.
Well, I think it'd be great if you did that, because you understand all the issues. And we need to contact Karen Cole has and so forth, and Mary Ann does as well, as does Chris. So drop their name wherever you go. She's up for, like, something, so.
I'm a Hasbrouck, and she's got off.
We called her a big one. But anyhow, everybody, if you do that, any other suggestions?
Mike, I thought that was real hair.
Are me? Oh, yeah.
All right, so that's the general review, then? I guess.
Joe, can I ask something?
Sure.
I'm sorry. You say you don't count that as an internal audit? You mean that the letter, you discount that as some notification? Is this, he asked about something?
The, the letter from BKB?
Oh, yeah, I don't know the details behind it, other than what they told us. That it's going to be a significant officials.
We haven't even seen a draft of it yet, so we just heard it was coming.
Who does that affect? Everybody?
Well, yeah, that will be recorded. And somebody jump in if I'm wrong, but it gets listed on the single audit, which is the audit that gets sent out to all the federal agencies for grants. And.
The rating agencies?
Yeah, and it's not a good thing. It's not as bad as a material weakness, but it is, like they say, what you really have to do with significant deficiencies is correct them before they become material weaknesses.
There will be people asking us what our plan is.
Right.
What our. There will be government agencies asking, asking what our plan is to carry this.
What would be the path of action? I mean, are you two working together, or other?
Well, yeah, I think we're going to see it. We're going to, that's what I said, we'll work together with the clerk's office. And, you know, some of the impacted departments. And see what we can do to, you know, deal with these concerns.
Not really, not at the moment. Obviously, we want to help, but just keep in mind, right now, we can see the accounts payable if we don't do accounts receivable, so.
I'm a little disgusted that the city and state refuse to pay their bills, and so we get deemed as being materially weaker, insignificant, or whatever, because they won't pay their bills to us. But are we looking at developing some kind of uniform policy so we don't have ten different ways of billing from ten different parts of the county? I mean, can we, can we undertake an effort to unify so that all accounts receivables are handled in the same way? If that's what, if that's what they're looking for? I mean, it seems like they're being against us or other people who refuse to pay their bills, but.
Well, if I could, now, you're the expert, but, Joe, but item number one said Accounts Receivable Collections Policy. The county board needs to come up with something that we need to.
Yeah, there's a policy there that we probably need.
These are two separate issues, two collections of billing. They're related, obviously, but.
But is there an agreement and understanding about this? You know, with the city?
Our debtors?
Yeah.
Well, I mean. So, now let's kind of shift and get into some specifics about the three government agencies or three issues that we have. And it's, when I first looked at this, it was surprising to me, because our three issues here are really with other governmental units. And, you know, typically, like, yeah, I'll use my favorite, Patrick's favorite phrase that I use, the private sector, you know, you have a real definitive policy on how to deal with accounts receivable. But on these, these are other government agencies who really, in a lot of ways, are our partners supposedly. And, and they're not paying us. And when Mike comes back and says, you know, based on his report, they're not planning on paying us, then we get into this, you know, not only is, how do we collect the money that they owe us? But how do we develop a policy or going forward so that we won't keep on running into this sort of issue of people we're supposed to be working with aren't paying us for the services provided?
I like Mike's idea about confusing the, confusing the city's prison.
What I suggested, and not in jest, because I did it once with the state, when they weren't paying, is that, you know, we are, there was a death in the city jail. And so, Mike Fagan Landau said, paid to us and said, "Will you be our jail?" We said, "Yeah, here's the deal." And I don't know how, if it's in the right, it's the right, it should be, but anyway. So, I mean, what we tell them is, "Okay, look at the contract." And we say, "We're invoking the, we're nullifying the contract in five days." So, we take city prisons to, up to one specific place or something. We don't care if they're not coming here.
Well, like remodel the jail on the sixth floor of the courthouse.
Is that really a practical option? I mean.
Well, actually, I think it is. I mean, it sounds horrible, but it is a practical option, because.
You only have to do it once, I think, to get the media attention.
Well, it's not desirable.
I think we need to be pretty cautious about the steps we take.
Absolutely.
And I would think, Joe, if you talk to their finance director, and maybe I'm putting you in a bad spot, but the city's finance department, "Hey, this has been the way you've always reimbursed us for this service. What's the problem? And if you want a couple commissioners to go with you, hey, we can go there and talk."
Well, you know, we had one meeting that, with Steve and Marty, and Patrick went to it and I. And we talked about some things, and we didn't have a lot of resolution. And one of the things they came back and saying was, "Well, you know, we've been advised by the city prosecutor that this isn't our liability, and that's why we're not paying it." And so, you know, I think we'd like some direction on what we think when they throw that argument out, that the city prosecutor is advising against these payments. How do we come back at it?
Well, I think one of the things to do is, and we've talked about it in legal counsel as well, is to talk to the judges about what their, what the order is, says. And if they change what the order says, like words like, "The city will pay for this," you know, not quite that, but making it clear that it's a city responsibility, because maybe you could explain how this happened. Somebody is arrested on a city ordinance, and then the failure to appear occurs and all that kind of stuff. And then, pretty soon, they're saying, "Well, this isn't a," prosecutor says, "Well, this is not a city matter anymore."
So, generally, it's my understanding that for the jail issue, that folks are coming into court, and failure to appear is a great example, and the judge is filling out the order, and the order is saying these are city charges. And pursuant to the contract, the jail is then billing the city pursuant to the contract for those city charges. And I think that the city is alleging, no, that's not always the case. It's not always a city charge, but the jail is following the court order.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who is prosecuting? Is it a city prosecutor, or is it somebody from Ralston? If they're arrested in Ralston?
The city prosecutor does Ralston charges.
Yeah, if the city prosecutor is doing it, they should pay.
Well, I think there were two separate issues with the jails, where it's my understanding. There was one on whether or not the city was being billed for smaller charges, like under Ralston code. What would be left? Ralston, Waterloo, maybe?
Boystown, not too bad.
Yeah, Boystown. So, I think the jail acknowledged that they were probably billing incorrectly for those. Those should be billed to Ralston, they should be billed to Boystown, but they were billing the city for those. So that was a separate issue. The other one was the failure to appear issue, where if the city prosecutor would have been in court when the judge was ticking the boxes, the judge, according to the city after the fact, ticked the wrong box. But that's an issue between the city prosecutor's office, the city, and the court. We can't interpret these court orders after they've been issued. It'd be just the same as if we were going to start saying, "Oh, they calculated the out date wrong, and so we're going to start releasing people, you know, on different dates than what the court is telling us." We can't do that.
So, and isn't the, I think someone told me, isn't the outstanding balance with the city of Omaha relating on this now, like over a million dollars?
No, I don't think it's that big.
$100,000?
I think in, I'll let Mike speak, because I think in his report, it was $800,800, that's what he said.
But I think Amber said today, when we were in exec, I think she said it was over a million dollars as of today.
I, as of last week, when I looked, it was about a half million.
I have.
Really?
Yeah.
But had they?
Sixty days past.
But is that counting? Because in the letter, that April 30th letter, they talked about overbilling since 2016 to the $611 that they were going to deduct from future payments. So does that include those deductions, or did they ever do that?
I don't know if they did that.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, these are, just my clarification, these are errors that they found, that the city's alleging errors, that they either were billed to the wrong jurisdiction, or there was an error in the city, in the judge's order. Failure to appear.
Yeah, it's my understanding the other jurisdiction one is minimal. I mean, that, that would be.
So what's the big one?
So the big one is the failure to appear. So the ju, they're alleging that the judge ticked the wrong box.
When you say, what do you mean by that?
So if they were failure to appear, let's say the underlying charge was a state charge.
Okay.
And when they come in for failure to appear, then the judge would take the city ordinance failure to appear charge instead of a state charge, because the underlying charge is state. So they're saying that on things where the underlying charge was a state charge and not a city charge, that when they come in then, or when they get issued the failure to appear, when that charge gets generated, they're doing it under the city instead of the state.
And they're saying it should be under the state, not the city?
Right.
And that's their argument, like you said, with the judge.
Right.
So that's not really a, that's not really a situation where we can, I mean, I guess we could try to figure out how to help them change the form.
And I'm not even sure if it's wrong, you know? I mean, I think, I think the judges can choose. I mean, they can choose which, they, it's a separate charge. So they have that option then, when they go back into court, too, on whether or not it's some of the state failure to appear or city failure to appear. So even though the underlying charge is a state charge, I'm not even sure if it's wrong.
Is there a statute that said that they have to, the city pays for, or is it just based on court orders? Is it, what's the?
There's a contract.
There's a contract.
So we have a con, so what? They're violating the contract, because they don't agree with the way the judge checked the box?
Or we need the contract to be better clarified to represent what the party thinks should happen in that situation?
Go to court for it, or?
Well, I'm not even sure if the contract can address that, because I'm not sure that we can, we can extra judicially interpret these orders.
Well, we can do a breach of contract.
That we can contract around what these orders say, necessarily.
Sue the city and breach the contract.
Between the city and the court.
But, you know, it is one of those where it's between the city and the court, but the city is subjecting their laws.
Yeah, what's the contract say?
So we make noise.
Does it say you pay pursuant to the court order? This is the.
Well, it's just, it's just that the contract speaks to what they pay if they're on, just city charges, they pay what they pay if it's city charges, what they pay if they're on both city and state charges.
So if it says failure to appear, then that's city, and they're supposed to pay. And if they don't agree with that, that they can take that up with the judge. Otherwise, they're breaching the contract, and we have to breach the contract.
Well, if they're, no, thank.
So we sue them.
I appreciate the discussion, but, you know, I don't want to get into litigation with the city.
Yeah, you don't want to talk to them.
We don't do that. But we, I think we need to figure out how, what is, what would clarify it, if we can get the judges to add some language or change some language or something of that nature. I don't know that they would be, they wouldn't object to that. Maybe they would. But Kristen, are you, are you primarily working, are you on the front line in this?
I've been in, yeah, I mean, I've been involved in it.
So I think what maybe what we do is we have a team that would be, you know, people from the county attorney's office, definitely. Amber and her team from Corrections, myself.
Yeah.
And I don't know if anyone else has any ideas who would want, but we come up with like an approach and research enough that we could write basically a demand letter to the city and say, you know, "We believe you owe us this much money," and, you know, have our fact pattern to back it up, and send that to them, and. Okay.
Go ahead.
So what I'm thinking is, I don't want to say we believe. Here's the statement of money owed from the city to us. I don't want to, you know, make it flexible. That money is owed. And I think we need to take your advice on how you think the best way to approach the city is, too.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure if that's, I mean, if we're talking diplomacy and diplomatic, I'm not sure I'm the one who should give the charge on that.
I'm thinking, truthfully, I'm thinking more a hardball. I mean, if I've got a contract to pay my broker, or somebody that put in a concrete driveway, either he's going to, you know, I need to pay him, or he's violating lanes, or taking action.
Well, we, we can certainly collect all the information. And I think that's what Joe's suggesting is, is to get the information from Corrections, get copies of some of these court orders, get some of this information that is out there. And we can certainly present you options in executive session, if that's what you guys.
Because if this works well, I'm not going to pay for other things. Maybe 911's next, and I'll figure out what else I pay the county money for.
I agree with everything Joe said and what you just said about getting all the information and everything else. But I don't think we write a demand letter. They're not, they already think they're, they have nothing to lose by saying no. I think what we have to do is figure out another approach, whether it's getting us, actually, a state senator to introduce the legislation, or whether it's to go to the presiding judge and other judges and say, "This is what's happening. What can you do to help us? Can you put some language in your orders that make it clear they have to pay us?" Because if we present it with it, they're going to say, "Oh, gee, thanks a lot, I got to go bowling." They're not paying any attention to us.
Yeah.
I inherited a collection firm. A guy embezzled over a million dollars, and I inherited it. Representative General Bullers and Sears, and he did a horrible job, I hated it. But that, I mean, that was different. We had statutes that we could go get, and, you know, we sent people out to get cars and all that crap. I hated it. But, I mean, that was different, because we had a writ contract that said, "This is what happens to you if you don't pay." We don't have that with the city. I mean, they're.
We do.
Well, we do, but they don't want it.
That's why I say.
Well, I think we ought to try to get the, I'd like to go with the judges first, and see if we can get the judges.
I'm not sure if it's a judicial issue, though. I mean, I think that they're asking us to, they're, 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 the order is the order. I mean, if they want the orders changed, then that's a city issue to go to the judges to work on how, how those boxes get checked and whatnot. I mean, we can certainly support the city in doing that, but I don't think it really necessarily solves the issue.
Well, here's, here's, well, here's what I think.
I mean, I think if you present the evidence to a judge, there's a possibility that they do something to accommodate the county, because they're not, we're not being paid. If they don't, then all, all bets are off. But I think we ought to try that with the judges first, I really do. So, but I, I mean, you know, it's a consensus.
Let us get together and hold the information and our argument. And I think Kristen, a good idea, then we could have that behind us. And then we could think about the options and come back. Maybe, like she says, it says, "One option could be litigation." We don't want to discuss that in any sort of public meeting. Then we would come back and address this issue again in an executive session, and see what the consensus of the.
Too bad Jim's not here, because he's always speaking on collecting the money and going after it. I'm serious.
Mary Ann had a good idea earlier. Maybe you, would you tell us what you thought about earlier? I think it was a good idea.
Well, we need to know the exact amounts, and then work with Leah to put out a press release or do a press release that say, "This is the money that we are getting paid through a contract that we have with the city, and through an agreement that we have with the state and Nebraska." I mean, again, we're getting banged on the top of the heads about property tax, over and over and over and over.
Like saying people that won't pay their bills now.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's, like I say, it's literally.
I mean, this is jail reimbursement, living all over again.
Yes, this is what it is. Exactly.
Well, I think it's a good idea, because, you know, being polite's okay, but not in this situation.
We can say it politely. We'll smile when we say it.
But, yeah, and I think it's a good thing. Hopefully, we get kicked for it. Anyway, we'll do, but let's get the information.
Chris, do you want to say anything about it, or you?
Let me just remind people, the other issue is that if the receivables are not collectible, any of these receivables that we're talking about, they have to be written down. And that's a formal county board action of a write-down, and that money is taken as a reduction to reserves.
Okay, so wait, say that one more time.
Any accounts receivable that are not collectible have to be written down. And we take a write-down, that is a reduction to county general fund reserves.
And it takes board action.
And it takes board action.
Like the white hole.
Yep, exactly what it is.
How many years have they been paying?
I guess about 11 years.
Years, and then, we started getting into this issue, it's probably gone on a couple of years now, where all of a sudden, they took this new approach. For a while, things were fine with them, and they were paying 90 or 95 percent. And we were resolving it, and everything was clean. And then all of a sudden, they took this new approach, and.
Well, they're taking the state approach.
I just don't think that they feel, well, you know, what Mike feels.
Well, one other thing we could do is get on the city council agenda, go down and publicly present our case. I mean, the city council members, you know, they've been.
They probably don't even know about it.
No, they don't. This is all family.
So this is somebody.
Certainly, the exec, the mayor and Marty are well aware of this issue, but it's.
I do think it'd be good to meet with several council members.
I've talked about it in public. Why not get on the agenda and talk about it? Why?
Well, why not make it a little more?
Get their first. It was in line with what Mary Ann said.
Yeah, friendly and talk to the council members.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather tell them about how close we do. I don't want them.
Okay, you two do that, then.
That's fine.
I'll be the one to go talk to them in public. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, let's get all the material together that we need, and then, once we have that, we'll come back and talk about what our plan of action would be.
Do we have to adopt a, as this item says, Accounts Receivable Collections Policy?
No, not today. There was a discussion of it.
Okay, we're going to.
We have an Accounts Receivable Collection.
Okay, all right.
Do we?
Yes.
Is it adequate?
I think we have to tweak it.
It works for our purposes. Yeah, we need to change things.
How soon will you have those numbers?
I, a lot of this I have to talk with, with Amber about. I would think that we would try and get this sometime in the first quarter of next calendar year.
Okay, well, Mike said we need to change some things. I'd like to see what those changes are, so we can get that going. Okay, we do that, too? Okay, well, let's move on to the next item.
Chris has it.
Pardon me?
No, I just, next. So I made a statement to you in the meeting, but my question is, so we have the stack, I mean, you can set market rate on the detention.
For DM, for DMs.
And then my point was that, I know our rates were bigger than Lancaster's, so our rate has to be, you know, somewhere close or higher. So, the state refused not to stay. I'm just wondering, is there some statute totally that says they can just not pay? Do they do any, any of their other debtors? Like, there are people that they owe debt with, and just decide not to pay? Because usually, they do some out of reserve. And I'm just trying to, for the sake of setting up this argument, saying, are there any other local governments that are doing like that? Or is it just us?
I, it's my understanding they're paying the other detention facilities in the state, and they have.
But Lancaster's under contract? And Matt, is Madison under contract?
I think that Lancaster is.
Yeah, Lancaster's under contract.
Madison used to be. I don't know if they have a current. I have seen the Madison contract in the past.
I, I think that Lancaster is, I, Madison used to be, I don't know if they have a current, I have seen the Madison contract in the past, I don't know if they're under current contract, but it's my understanding they're paying the other detention facilities in the state.
But Madison, to me, wouldn't be higher than Lancaster, they would probably, if they're doing marketing, they're about the same. Okay, are, are we the only local government that I'm paying?
That I'm aware of, yes.
Well, that is, I mean, again, do they, does Madison and Lancaster have a contract, and it's not that we don't have a contract, they just haven't signed it, right?
Yeah, there was still some back and forth, but, uh, it has not came before you all.
This is not, comes out soon.
You're talking about a contract with a new rate?
Yes.
Well, can, can.
Well, what contract?
Cause they're paying the old rate, they're paying us something they're just not paying us.
And for what it's worth, when I forecasted revenues, um, I did forecast the revenues at the old rate, so, we're actually.
But we're still bill, we're still signing them a bill.
We're still billing the three twenty-three and they're still paying the two ten.
Making, it's making it an accounts receivable, which would potentially have to be written off.
Then why haven't we brought the contract to the board and have them, and deliver it to them, so that they can either one, not sign it? I mean, what, what standing do we have now if we don't have a contract?
You are bringing out an old?
I don't think that we need a contract for them to pay.
In certain instances, they, there, you don't, there, in certain instances, um, you don't need a contract for them to pay, I think the arguments in the past have been, um, they wanted a contract that helps them with their internal billing, it helps them with budgeting, it helps them with forecasting, it helps them with, um, invoicing after the fact, all, all good things. Um, but there are some statutes that they have to pay in certain instances and you don't always have to have the contract. A contract was done, is my recollection, um, and one of the issues, uh, that came very, very late in the game was that they put a cap in and so that contract, um, was put before you and then I believe it was removed because there was a cap added and the cap was lower than what would have, um, gotten them through a whole year. And so then there would have been a contract problem with, um, well, we've hit our caps and now we don't have to pay at all, so, uh, there have been attempts at trying to get a contract in place with them.
But we have, we don't have one right now.
We do not have one at this time.
Can I ask one more question, Mike?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, that's gonna go that route, then, can, can we go back to negotiation with them and, that, that, the, the, the ten day law is still there that we have to pick up the first ten days for free? That.
No, we're billing for the first day, not billing for the last day.
Wha- what was the clause in the county, years ago, I remember this, that the first ten days?
That was for, that was for HHS.
So that, because that changed.
So, HHS now, they only, we only bill them, so that signs that the kids should leave the youth center until they go to either one of the YRTCs, so.
For, for the HHS.
It, it happens frequently, but it's not, it's not a lot.
And now, with that change, there's not a lot of technical HHS getting in it.
Just the one way to, to the YRTC.
So.
From the time they have a disposition to the time they leave for the YRTC.
So, most of the harder, and this negoti, is this negotiation with the state, this with state probation? This contract?
This is HHS, it's, HHS.
This is? Not probation?
Right.
The last thing I had, Mary Ann, and I may be wrong, that does something, but was, uh, our response to them when we had her back from the state.
And that was?
But, don't you guys like call them up and ask, you know, why aren't you paying us a bill, and what, and what do they say?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
No money.
They don't have the funds.
So we, we're floating them basically, cause they don't have a place in the somewhere.
They have it, they're just not paying it.
That's what I'm saying, can we, can you, well, that don't mean it's gonna get paid, but I know at one point we were trying to charge them a, a, a fee for every time they're late, I mean, I don't. Yeah, so, but I'm just saying, do you open a contract?
I remember the conversation, I don't know that we ever got to that point.
Can you open a contract negotiation up and add that piece in there? Just say, okay, cause you're basically floating them, we're lesser than what it would cost to put them.
I think, I think we need a contract, I don't understand that, I mean, I, I know the laws say, you know, you, they're paying all this other stuff, but it seems like it'd be helpful if we had a contract, I don't know, you'd have them writing, you don't think so?
We bet. Oh, no, I, I don't see anything wrong with it.
No, I think it, it's all bold without question to have something in writing and not just a trust, right, or Mike?
I'd hire a collection agency.
Yeah, right.
Well, listen, let's, uh, I think we just about talked this one to death, but I, I think we know where we're heading, some people have some.
Well, I, I just wanna, I wanna clar, you know, we, I think we're done on, on the city of Omaha, and this one, I just wanna clarify, you know, there, and there are some channels that
Yeah.
go try and collect funds on a case-by-case basis, but given the number of cases we're looking at, that seems to me to be extremely labor-intensive and tedious process. So, what, what's the best way to go and just on a go-forward basis, try and get them to pay, you know, an agreed-upon rate, how do we do that?
Right.
Mary Ann?
Well, on the ones that they haven't paid on, I think we, again, send it in a bundle. I mean, we have the data of who they haven't paid on, so we put it in a bundle and say, you, you know, A, B, C, D, all the way to Z, you owe X, Y, Z on these people.
Yeah.
And we're asking you to pay up, and if they don't pay up, then, I mean, then, you know, then we have to talk about what our next step is.
I agree.
But I wouldn't do it individually, I would just do it as a, but we have all the information, spread, send the spreadsheet down with a letter that say, this is the amount of money that you owe us for these clients and let them say no.
Okay.
Who should get a copy of that, do you think? I mean, should the others, who else stay after them? People who run the budget, the state?
Uh-huh, the appropriations committee?
Yeah, that'd be good, I think that's right. PJ?
That's good, um, I think it is important going forward that we have things in writing, it's great to have the trust, it's been that way, but I think it's good to have some understanding in writing, and I also wanna do this, I wanna find out if we can just say, okay, we're not taking them any longer, period. That'll reduce the numbers at the youth center real quick. And I saw the person to your left there shaking her head yes with me, which I don't get very often. They're usually shaking it the other way, but seriously, I think we oughta find out, can I just stop paying my dorky?
Yes.
He has no contract, whatever, I just stop paying him his consulting fee or whatever.
Well, you did bring that up earlier, but you ordered to say it for the mic.
Well, Mike, thank you for your good work.
So I, I guess, well, we set the course of action that the first thing we'll do is to, let's compile all this data and put it all on a sheet and we'll write the letter and we'll say, you know, this has been discussed and at this point, we are, I don't know if we're demanding or strongly requesting payment of these and, you know, send that like certified mail and see what happens.
I think what Mary Ann struck on is exactly right, this makes it really clear and kinda starts the discussion in a formal way, although I know you've had other discussions. And I think the same thing that Joe suggested and others talked about too, is talking about strategy and stuff.
Perfect.
And I do think what PJ brought up, cause I, it was a brilliant idea, one that I had earlier, was that, uh, maybe we figure out, uh, what if we do if we stop this? You know, I, I told Bob Houston that one time, we were in a feud with the state, and I called him up and I said, we're not gonna take any more of your people, you're gonna have to send them to East Omaha. And he said, well, I guess that's what we'll have to do, I mean, you know, and, and they start doing things, but when, when Heinemann finally said, there is no money, the last time I looked, it was, they were supposed to twenty million dollars, and it's just grown since then, so we're on our own. But anyway, I, I think what's been discussed here is very helpful and, uh, we'll take that path, okay?
Should we send that to you then, Joe?
One quick.
Yeah, you and I can talk about it and, and we'll decide exactly how we do it.
Joe, you said to do it, uh, case by case is very tedious, if it's tedious for us, it'll also be tedious for the city. They just won't do it. I think we have to do it like Mary Ann, we list them all.
Cause all, they would just take forever.
Well, if they do one by one.
Well, if you're harassing them much, it might.
They don't care.
At all.
We don't, we don't put windows. Okay, all right.
Excellent.
All right.
Let's go to the next item.
Next one, encumbrance policy. Okay, the, the first issue here is, I gotta tell you what.
Anybody who wants to leave, so, yeah, you go pay somebody.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, be in touch. Thank you. Say hi to Mary Ann. Thanks a lot, see you all later.
So, I guess the way to start out this, this encumbrance policy, you know, that, uh, we sent out, Eric and I sent out a, a letter, uh, that affected January first, we were canceling all, uh, requisition level encumbrances that were three years or older. And when I was getting ready to write that.
Different, different requisition.
Why not take, explain the difference between requisitions and POs and how they're.
Right, requisition is basically when centered by the department, uh, in some cases, a bunch of encumbrances, basically, we're just gonna hold that money that we use at some point in the future. At some point, then we issue a purchase order through the purchasing department that it gets tied to that requisition or purchase request in the Oracle system. So, what we're talking about encumbrances is basically, um, there's, there's a larger group of, of requisitions that get tied to POs, some that are not yet tied to POs, and he's talking about five years or older, it's, it's just being held out there to eventually being used in the future, and I think.
They haven't been drawn.
They haven't been drawn off, okay, yes.
So we did that, it was about nine hundred thousand, and when I was getting ready to, to write that letter, I, I wanted to look at our current encumbrance policy and, uh, I asked purchasing if they had it, I asked the clerk's office, it was in the accounting policy, and nobody had it. So, you know, there's all these rules that we say that you can encumber salary and everything like that, but I've never been able to find the policy, so.
Just say it with authority, Joe.
Um, so that's one of the things that I wanna do and I, and I've committed before, uh, the end of this fiscal year that we will come forward with an encumbrance policy that, uh, to bring to the board, to incorporate it, so, so that's, that's the first point, I think. It's just really, uh, on, on every area, but I think if you look between the total amount of encumbrances, uh, including all the current, between the POs and, uh, the recs, it, I think it's over ten million dollars, like, that's not right?
That was seven, according to the letter, roughly seven million.
That was just rec, wasn't it?
All five years?
Oh, you.
No, no, current, and current.
I heard you're saying this, but basically, I think in combination, ones that are tied to POs and then the ones that are just.
There, and all that are existing, even if they're within the last year, I think.
Right, true.
And not all encumbrances are bad, it's just when they get to, to be, when they get to be three years old, then, you know.
No.
We have an empty guidance on, on how long you should be holding those.
Right.
Sure is.
And, uh, you know, like they say, all these encumbrances, when we look at the county's cash reserves, the amount of total outstanding encumbrances is subtracted from the cash reserves. So, these encumbrances are out there and it could be ten million dollars that, you know, our reserves are reduced by, by the amount of outstanding encumbrances. So, we canceled the, you know, so the next step, I think, is we wanna camp, there's, I don't know if you have a number, you know how much it is, Eric, how much are out there on, on like the POs that aren't fully used, but, uh, you know, I'm tending towards going after those and like saying everything that's like, uh, a hundred dollars or, or less, we're just gonna cancel, but that, that have been like drawn upon and, cause there's lots of encumbrances that like sitting out there at like, uh, forty-five dollars, a project might have cost two, like encumbered for two thousand dollars, they spent ni- nineteen hundred fifty-five and the forty-five just sits there and sits there. And, so the thing is to go out and cancel those, which would free up money.
I think a hundred dollars is low.
I, well, tell me what you guys, I'm open.
Five hundred. I mean, five hundred's sitting there, I think we oughta hit that target.
I mean, he touched on a good point, a lot of that money out there is because at the beginning they budgeted a certain amount, they did a rec for this, what they thought it was gonna cost, it wasn't quite that amount, and whether it be fifty dollars or a hundred dollars or whatever, it would just sit there.
Mary Ann?
Can we have a list?
List of what?
Of the encumbrances, who has them, what are they, how long have they been on the books?
Right.
Do we have one? Yeah, you can pull that in. Do we have a list?
Yeah, and, and to me, I, I wanna say one thing, and that is that some encumbrances, I, I would like to know, a lot of those small ones, yeah, I agree, I wanna know for anything, five hundred dollars or more, it's important to find out, it's particularly if they're current encumbrances, not, you know, less than a year, what are those for? Because I think that there are some elected officials and department heads that the under, expectation is they can, they can encumber for something that they know is gonna happen the next fiscal year. I understand when they get to be old, but I don't wanna just pull the rug out of, from under everybody just like that and one fell on.
Well, let's talk about what's really around the past few years in, in the budgeting process, yeah, there's many, mo, I would say most departments now, if they have any money left at year end, they encumber it, and so all the departments, like at the end of the year, are like ninety-nine point nine percent spent of the budget. And they haven't really spent all that money, but they encumber it at year end.
They need to justify in advance what their encumbrances are gonna be for.
They brought up years ago.
Yes.
Well, maybe what we need to do is to, when we get toward that period in time, that we.
Yeah, it mostly happens in June.
And, and also the same, when we get to that point in time, that we slam the door, we shut off some way, we shut it all off and say, you know, if you wanna, uh, build a, a, you know, a monument to somebody in your office, you don't get to do it, you know, come to us, Mary Ann.
Well, i- if it's part of the budgeting process.
Yeah.
Then shouldn't that, well, it happens at the end of the year.
Yeah.
As I say, they have to justify coming to the board to say, we wanna encumber X number of dollars for this project. Yes. To be spent in the next fiscal year by such and such a, you know, by that fiscal year. I mean, again, it, there has to be some accountability for it and.
Well, here, here's something that.
At the end of the year, we can approve it or not approve it.
Here's, that's, that's right, here's something else we discussed, and this'll probably make, oh my god, um, I don't know who it was, it was pretty evil, I think it was PJ, he suggested that we, uh, uh, name, name all the encumbrances and put them in, on the consent agenda, and so the.
Exactly.
Yeah, and so then if the, you know, some office has, uh, they're gonna, they want six thousand dollars of this fund to, you know, paint the, paint the wall or something or whatever, I mean, and have it out there, they have to come down and justify it or else it goes, yeah.
What does Mark say, truth in budgeting?
Yeah. I think that would be the.
You can put that in the policy, I mean, you could put in the coverage policy that they have to justify, you can't just encumber something without having justification for what it's gonna be for, I think that's a reasonable.
What does the state do, you wanna do?
I don't know if we wanna fall with the state does today.
No, I'm just thinking, no, that's tight.
I know, uh, they know what the city does.
Okay, go ahead.
The city'll allow you to encumber, help me out, Sherry, if I'm not saying this right, but, uh, they will look at them and, you know, all of us try and clean them up and they don't let them hang out there, so, in essence, are, are they approving them? Uh, what they're allowed to encumber, in a time?
A department can encumber their own, like, kind of uncomfortable speaking on the city's behalf, but from my experience when we were, when I worked there, at the end of the year, when we were posing for the audit, we would communicate with departments, you know, you have these encumbrances, do you need them, what can we close? And we, I mean, from a finance department's perspective, we worked with each department to determine what was still outstanding, what did you need, what didn't you need?
Yeah, I knew they, that there is like a check where they try and clean them up and they just don't like let them linger like we've historically been doing.
Mark?
A number of years ago, when Diane Bodiatto encumbered some money for that computer program, we discussed this, and I thought we eliminated certain encumbrances at that time, uh, things that were over three years old.
Yeah, we have to do that every few years, yeah.
Uh, we should have a written policy that we send out to whoever's handling the finances and the department head, uh, all of the elected officials and all of our departments, and we should do this in January to give them time to prepare for June. So, let's rewrite the policy with.
There's nothing to rewrite.
There is no.
Write policy.
Let's write the policy with dates certain for, you know, things transpiring.
All right.
And we'll vote on it in January.
You know, you know what I would like to look at is what Mary Ann suggested, get the list, because, uh, one of the tools that can be used to, to bring some, uh, order to this is a capital improvements program, you know, I mean, offices wanna redo things and re-move the desk around, tear this out and all that stuff. Make a capital improvements program and then prioritize who gets what, uh, we did that years ago someplace, I wanna say.
We have a capital.
Well, I think there oughta be, there oughta be one for this, you know, excuse me, go ahead.
No, you're right, we have the capital improvement program that Jerry brings to us by, that should be tied to.
Yes.
The two should be tied, and that's what they're using it for.
Exactly. So, Jerry, Jerry has to do this, then.
Well, for the capital.
For the capital.
Just kidding.
But, you know, at the same time, I will push a little back in that, you know, I think that certain things that are getting encumbered and get spent within, you know, six or at the most twelve months, there are some benefits to that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, you know, I'm not saying we just do this gold tur, gold turkey, but, you know, let's go after the old ones and the abuses of the system.
Alright, no, I agree. And I would like to see all of them, okay? Okay, we're kinda deciding, who's writing the policy on that?
I guess, uh, I will work with Eric, 'cause, uh, purchasing administers it and I'm involved with it. I think that it should come from Eric.
They don't work on getting the data for you, then.
Great, thank you, Eric. Next item is preliminary fiscal nineteen twenty budget topics.
Well, you know, we are, in a few weeks, gonna be into the start of almost budget season. And so there, I don't have a lot of topics yet, but really, mission, well, this relates to some of the D I and PJ that.
Yeah.
And your concerns about, uh, you know, doing something regarding mental illness. And, uh, you know, what sort of program you have in mind, and I know you'd asked me if we have money for it, and I don't know how much money we're talking about, but I think, given the magnitude of the issue, that it is a concern on how we'd be able to, um, fund something that's, but I, I wanna.
I just wanna say this very quickly before our questions start. My thought is not to build some big place and have all this stuff staffed with psychiatrists, we can't afford it. But there may be some things we can do inside corrections and inside the youth center until this program that it sounds like it's gonna blossom at the youth center, which is coming down the pike, which will be terrific with UNMC. And so, my concern is that, you know, for example, the woman that died recently at correction, she was schizophrenic and she was very well educated and had a late onset of schizophrenia, would not allow us to draw blood to find out what was, anything going on with her. And she died, and there she is in our custody and dies, and then we, we have other cases like that occur. But what I'm looking at is, uh, what can we do with corrections particularly, and the youth center now, to back them up on the need for, you know, counseling? For example, we just had a report yesterday that Douglas County, and I know that there's nuances to it, but Douglas County keeps more children in the total lockdown and for longer periods of time. Now, that's not a fair statement, but that's what was said. And, uh, so we need to figure out what's going on with that and figure out some way with, some kind of, uh, mental health person could slow that down. Chris?
Well, no, I, I was on two things, the, in January, hopefully, we got another meeting tomorrow. They're fine tuning what this number is to bring back to the board for this UNMC deal. What they're talking about right now, what I've asked them to do is, there's a private entity that's gonna match it. What I've asked them to do is take into consideration what the, what probation is already suspended, what Region Six is spending, and what we're spending. And then, like, whatever that gap is, the county would feel, so right now, and this was last week, I don't know what it is this week. Let's say, so, just make sure, let's say the number is total over two hundred thousand dollars. The private, uh, entity will match the one hundred, and we come up with the rest. They're, they're saying right now that number, and what I've asked them to do is to have it funded for the, the half of this year till June.
Okay.
And then we can have a bigger discussion of the budget, so what they're looking like is that number maybe fifty thousand dollars.
How much?
To take us to.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Could take us to the fiscal.
To take us to the end of this year now.
Right.
The whole full budget is another thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, the other piece is, and I gotta make sure to give you all these dates, and that's what I, I tried to put a marker in the ground. Uh, but that article I wrote in the middle is about the hospitals. So, the question is going to come to the hospital this year, now that Medicaid is paying in the past. What are you planning to do with this uncompensated care money? So, I, I, I'm gonna have them have that question, but I do think this is the time for an organized conversation because I can, I use you all as a backup, to say, look, there's two people talking about this, you better come on.
Good.
And so, I think there's a, from my understanding, Sean thinks that Ricketts is not going to fund it in this first biennial because they gotta do the other stuff, so that gives us some time to talk through it and really get them rep, 'cause their answer's gonna be, we don't quite know yet. We don't know what they're gonna do, but I do think, we talked to them while I was hot about doing, um, something to some degree, and I don't, and I don't know if that burden's all ours, but, you know, I, I think we, we coordinated and trying to go at that now.
You know, yesterday, I heard, um, someone who knows, uh, told me that, uh, the governor intends and has threatened to take ninety million dollars out of the university's budget to fund this. And of course, that's, you know, doesn't surprise me, that kind of a tactic, you know, to create some chaos and blame somebody else and all that, get everything, you know? But that's what he threatened to do, and it came from someone who's in the upper level of the community, uh, who said that to me. And I, one thing I'd like to do, uh, we need to prob, maybe I'm dead wrong, but I'd like to see Debbie here from, uh, what's it called now?
General Assistant.
Yeah.
General Assistant.
I think this is, these things that we're talking about have a huge impact, and I think also, uh, that, uh, mentally ill. Recently, a family came to me who had a son, uh, who, a sixth grader, who was bullied for about a year and a half. And right before Thanksgiving, you know what these, this kid said, and it's a Catholic school in Western Ohio, said, you should kill yourself. Face to face, you should kill yourself. Well, he ended up going to school with a knife and everything deteriorated. And, uh, perpetrators are walking around and enjoying the holidays, and this kid is tormented. He's gone to, and referee's gotta wait to get in to see a psychiatrist. The waiting list is hard. That's what I'm talking about, these families are desperate, you know, and, like, the family, the poor guy that came down from South Dakota on the bus and ended up walking out of Sixtieth. You know, someplace, we need to figure out how to intervene, not that we could've, but, uh, maybe we have them, I guess, the police have them out of home. But it's such a huge issue, and I, I'm just trying to think of, if something happens in your family, who do you call? I mean, you know, crisis, if you have a sister who becomes totally out of control, and, which my sister is, no, maybe if your sister comes out totally out of control, you know, who do you call? I mean, do I, do I call the, use my name and call Sherry? Do I? I don't know. Maybe you do, you probably do.
Well, there's two things. One, with the youth center, um, there are also providers or even parents and foster parents that are out there saying that, um, their child either was in the youth center or is in the youth center, and when they get out, they're, the follow-up is weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, um, which we have at the adult side as well over at our community health center. So, that would be something that I think we need to look on in terms of outpatient services for mental health.
Right.
And the, it would, for the youth. Back at the Tri-County Retreat, there was a report given out for the stepping up project of the things that they're looking on, and we'll be coming up with what we want to be funded in order to, as projects and programs at the corrections facility, to reduce the mental health population in corrections, so that'll be coming.
Okay, well, I, I'm, oh, sorry.
Would, would it help, I mean, I, I knew Vicky's role, but I didn't know, know her role, I got a little bit better understanding, and, um, Con. Would it help to add her on the days that Mike does his presentation?
She, there, she's actually preparing to come in January to do the, kind of a more in-depth for Douglas County. I mean, it's part of the region, but she's gonna focus on what she's doing in Douglas County.
Would it pay to have her on at least quarterly?
Yeah, good, absolutely. We could just tack it on to the corrections.
Okay, okay. Report. What's her name?
Vicky Meka.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Mark.
Great.
Yeah, we're looking for money to fund things. You're talking about the encumbrances, how many millions of dollars that we wipe it out would go to the general fund or be added back to the general fund. We're talking about accounts payable, uh, one point nine million dollars. So, let's use the money we know we can get that will pad the reserve, if you wish to use that term, and use that for mental health initiatives, both the youth center and the correctional facility. You know, even if it's only a million dollars each, that's enough for four psychiatrists each. And, and, if we can find psychiatrists.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing is, uh, Rickett's son was robbed rather recently. Uh, did they ever catch the guy?
I don't think so. I think Rickett's executed him, I'm not sure.
But, you know, let's, let's tell Ricketts that the kid was mentally ill.
Yeah.
And that he needs to fund. Well, never mind, I, I, I do these side things and.
Okay, I sit next to you. Marian.
Well, and I think that goes back to what Joe says, is that we need to know what those specific programs and services are that we want to fund, so that we can then determine the amount.
Right, how do we do that? Will you be involved in that?
Yeah, the stepping up will come, and we'll say, we, we want X, Y, and Z as mental health, either programs or services at corrections. Now, the youth center is, um, being through the university and Creighton and Region and Harvard Family Service, all that. They'll come back with their detailed budget of what the services are.
Now, is this long in a different committee?
Well, it, it'll be reported out during Brad's at the youth center, the project updates that we do every month.
Okay.
And then we'll add, after the first of the year, we'll add Vicky to actually corrections, I think is the best place for.
I think so, too.
That to go.
Let me ask you, I know there are hot lines for suicide and so forth and everything else, and is there a place, you know, I, I, frequently, I read about some guy that's going off and shot two or three people in a restaurant, and the parents say, I couldn't control him, I couldn't get any help and all that. You think, what the hell, how can we, how can we help those people who are crying out?
Well, here's the problem with that, because I get calls like that all the time.
Yeah.
And this goes back to the comment that I make, is that mental illness, mental medical services are the only medical services that you have to have someone create violence, be violent to themselves or others in order to get help.
Yeah.
So, I have parents who have called me and said, I called the police, the police have come, the police won't do anything because there's no act of violence upon that person's self or others within the house, other than the parent saying, he threatened me, he told me he was gonna kill me. And the person's sitting there going like this. So, there, there, that's one of the problems with the system right now, to get that help. So, even if the person is a minor, and it gets even more complicated if that person is an adult, because then the question becomes, well, that person's an adult, so, you know, they're refusing services, I can't do anything about it. These are all things that, again, the EPC issue that we brought up as a legislative initiative, to where there's more than just police and county attorneys that can initiate that EPC process. That's one way to take care of it or address it. But that's gonna be an ongoing problem when you have adults that, again, have their own responsibility for themselves, yet the parents know that that person is in need. We get them at corrections all the time, you've gotten the calls, I've gotten the calls. Um, there was one sitting in corrections that wouldn't take the medication, wouldn't let corrections talk to their parents. That's their right, because they're an adult. So, again, it, the, the mental health professionals would be able to kind of trigger that.
Yeah.
Process for them to get the help that they're refusing to get.
Well, I guess what I'd like to do is ask you, Marian, and also Chris, if you'll keep us abreast of this, and, uh, so we aren't doing something redundant, and, uh, but I think the money that we were talking about was coming from encumbrances, uh, you know, some degree.
How much there is.
Yeah, we get that list, but if we could pull out a couple million, that'd be terrific, and figure out a way to go to Paris. And, you know, the chaplain program with the police popped into my head, which is totally a different deal. But, uh, you know, if we had, I don't know what the cops, I thought the cops had a group.
They do, they have the mobile crisis team, as well as a mental health professional that we're piloting in the Southwest Precinct, that's, that actually is stationed there and going out on calls with, um, um, the uniformed officers. So, we're, we're seeing how that works, to see if we wanna get that in other places.
Happy.
Just keep in mind, those encumbrances are a one-time deal, so if you wanna do a program that's gonna be ongoing, you're not gonna be able to count on the encumbrances to fund it on a long-term basis.
Cut the holy hell out of the encumbrances in my last three years. Yeah, you need to, you want to, Marian?
Well, and again, I think one of the things we need to look at, which we have looked at in the past, but there's a couple of things. One is, again, the outpatient services that we have at community mental health, whether that goes, outpatient hours can be extended because there's a need, um, after hours that seems to be coming up. Two, um, I know the judges aren't gonna like this, but it's a night court or a weekend court, I think we have to look at that, and it can be tied to potential mental health, um, court or services involved with that. Um, but those are two things that I think we should look at, and in the long run, even if we have to fund them to get them started, in the long run, it's going to save us money.
You know, you're right, and there is a mental health court being worked on by a presiding judge, I don't know where it is, but the other thing that maybe.
Which one? County or district?
No, it's the state's working on it, so, kind of modeling it after the drug court and the veterans' court.
Yeah.
So, instead of, we in Lancaster went and said, we wanted to start mental health courts, and they were gonna go ahead and fund Lancaster until we said no. And so then they said, well, you know what, we should do this like we did everything else, and it should be a state, um, initiative, so they're writing the guidelines right now for it.
One way that may be around this night court stuff, uh, 'cause those judges are that way. Uh, years ago, I remember that Rosemary Scoop, uh, was appointed a temporary judge, and she did all sorts of stuff. And, uh, one, one way to do that is, frankly, to ask, ask for a, a temporary, a temporary judge who does night court. And then we circumvent it, if these guys don't wanna, these men and women don't wanna get up at, you know, at nine o'clock at night and go to a court. I, I can't say I blame them, but, you know, come on, we'll get somebody, I think it's about four thousand lawyers in Douglas County, so.
What is that called? Is that called a magistrate?
I'm sorry?
Is that technically a magistrate?
Uh, no, and she was actually a judge, Rosemary was. And, um, she was appointed for a term, and she did a hell of a good job and cleaned up the, there were really a big backlog. But she worked days, she didn't work nights, but if you, if you gotta do it for night, uh, and they could, I don't know where you, where you could do it.
Well, corrections, I mean, the court's right there.
Yeah.
They're being brought in, they're being booked in.
Yeah.
So, you could literally go in and have them be in court right then and there.
Yeah.
And, you know, termination could be made right there. Otherwise, here's what happened, even on weekend, even if you did weekend, they're coming in on Friday night and they're sitting till Monday.
Yeah.
To be seen.
Sure.
So, just think about it.
Yeah.
If you did.
The costs and everything else.
Right, right.
Well, you know, that poor guy, you all know about him, the guy that came out with the coupon at the.
Right.
Asian restaurant on sixteen of the farms, and he spent four days in jail.
Yeah.
Wow. Over a coupon.
Right, right.
They kicked him out, it's expired.
Right.
Called the cops.
So, can I ask Mike, what's the state's issue with that, them having to fund it? Would it be cheaper for us to fund it than them sitting in it?
Well, yeah, the judges don't wanna do night court or weekend court. That's what the issue is. We have to find somebody who would like to take that on as a project.
Hey, just a couple of quick topics, uh, uh, other things on the budget that need to be done. First, the two thousand, the, the latest valuations came out yesterday, like, most people got them in the mail. So, I gotta try and get what the year-over-year increase in the Douglas County valuation is from, uh, the, uh, registered deeds, the assessor, which is always a challenge. Uh, but that money, we'll get that, and that'll give us a feel, too, of, uh, how much, uh, tax revenues will be increased. That should, the preliminary number should be available now.
I don't think it's gonna be that much.
Yeah, I mean, my evaluation, the change I know is.
Last year was that?
Which way?
Oh, mine went up a touch, but not, anything to scream.
Let's, let's see what the, what that is coming out of. And then the other last thought that I'll leave you with is that, uh, if things continue to proceed, that, uh, we, uh, there will be a bond offering of no more than a hundred and twenty million dollars. Could be less, but at least no more than, that, uh, will need to be funded, which, uh, will probably bring us back to looking at the potential increase to the levy. What I did talk to Paul Cone about is that in the first couple of years or so, we could just do interest only, which would, uh, you know, interest only would really be only about half the payment. So, we could talk about that, and what that would do is be able, enable you to, uh, increase the levy in kind of like two different phases, like one now, the other a year over a part, and then two years later.
Oh, you wanna do that?
What?
So, you wanna do that twice?
Well, this is all, this is all, uh, a subject of discussion, but I just, that, you know, if this is coming and the lease gets signed and everything else, there will be, uh, you know, a significant increase in. in requirements to pay that lease that we've always said would require an increase to the levy. And so that is coming down as a topic for the upcoming budget.
But at the same time, as you watch these encumbrances, you know, let's watch, and I know you do, Joe, let's really watch the budgets. I mean, we see what the private sector is doing, concert, UP had their best quarter, laid off a ton of people to be more efficient.
But let's not, I mean, I under- we always should be looking at that, and I completely agree, but let's not kid ourselves. When you're talking about three cent to create increase to levy potentially, you're not gonna get that out of your current budgets. That's not gonna happen. Unless you eliminate something big. I mean, if you trim around the edges, I mean, it's always gonna become more efficient without, you know, dramatically reducing the quality of the product to the taxpayer, but by the same token, to get to that point of really making that dent, we're talking huge numbers, huge numbers.
We are, but I, and that's not practical, I think we all understand that, but I think one of the things that's always bothered me, and it was done in my prior life, is that when we get the budgets, we, you know, if somebody asks for ninety-eight people, we get ninety-eight people. Maybe they get a hundred if they want a couple more, you know? And I, I just don't know whether that's how we ought to be operating. I mean, do we really need, you know, every office need that many people? Do they need them? I mean, you know, maybe they could cut, not, not lay off somebody, but not fill vacancies when they occur and, you know, cross train and all this other stuff. I, I don't know that I've ever seen that in the county, to tell you the truth. The other thing I'd like to see is a more flexible work schedule. You know, I'd like to see people have, work four days a week, work longer hours, be off free. It would cut the holy hell out of sick leave and everything else, it's my experience, and we gotta look into it.
Yeah, Mark? And I agree with that, provided it works for that department.
Yeah.
Um, wouldn't you send out the call letter?
I'd send that out like in February.
Okay, you always say everybody gets a flat increase. I've never liked that, but I always think of it after the call letters come out. They should have to justify not when they come before us, but prior to coming before us.
Is it salary?
Yeah, what we do is basically, yeah, is we give people three percent of salaries as an increase and tell them that all non-salary increases are to be held flat. That's how we do it. And I, I think salary increases average three percent, and I think seventy-five percent of the county's expenses are
I realize that.
Are people.
Again, I realize that. I'm just trying to figure out some way to create, make everybody rethink their department, you know, this three-year goal doesn't work. This three-year plan, that's thinking in the same mode they're thinking. With artificial intelligence, AI for Clara. Clara's laughing because the other day.
AI could have a different meaning for a farmer.
Yeah. I got a test that my grandson took the day off school to do his internship, and he was artificially inseminating cows. So he was up to his elbow in work.
This, this meeting is about to jump the show.
But, you know, artificial intelligence, I was reading it in Government Technology, an article about how people are using it. And I mentioned this at the meeting the other day, but how can we use it? Let's look deeply at how we can use.
The only thing I'll tell you is I hear you and I agree with you, but traditionally, the county has never been an early adopter when it comes to technology. And, you know, that's where I think this stuff is kind of getting done right now in pretty technology savvy organizations. And I think that's a stretch for us, to be honest with you.
I have a hard enough time finding natural intelligence. Artificial intelligence.
Are you talking, aiming at me?
I'm not, it just happened to be looking at me.
Mr. Gunga has the floor.
Patrick, you asked a while ago if we really wanna raise the tax rate twice, and the answer is yes. I mean, I don't wanna raise it at all, but I would rather do it in two steps than in one big step.
Yes.
But, well, a three cent bump, um, what do we, that's our current tax rate, about twenty?
Twenty-eight cents.
Twenty-eight, okay, so that's gonna, yeah, it's an eleven percent bump, you can read the headline now. Or a five and a half percent bump with another five and a half percent bump coming in two years. To me, that's a lot more palatable.
Okay.
And, and I wanna defer as much of this as I can, the sticker shopping, still have a hard time with it.
I understand.
I think it's up to you guys.
You're the bosses.
I agree with you, I only want it done after I leave office. The other thing we need to work at is with our legislators, 'cause there's some certainly inefficiencies. I think that deal of every five years, whatever it is, going out inspecting all the houses and measuring them is ridiculous in today's world. I mean, we can get you the market rate, and you can pick out any house on Thirty-Eighth and Polk Street or Ninety-Eighth and Pine, and I can get you the market number in a heartbeat.
And you can measure it from a photograph.
And we can look and see if somebody built a pool in their backyard or whatever, and they get in the building permit and so on. And those are things that we need to talk to the legislature about, 'cause it's antiquated kind of technology, the way they do it. They're driving out all day. All those people, they could be sitting at a computer and doing that work. Mike don't hesitate to criticize me and say, no, they have to drive around. No, I, I think that's. And if you go to Linden Estates, try to walk around those houses. Really, I mean. I, I'd like to suggest something before we leave, and that is something we've done, we did before. We need to really talk about priorities and what we're thinking about doing, and we haven't, in my view, haven't done that. We did it when Mary Ann was chair, we had a meeting over in Creighton and talked pretty seriously about what we thought about things. And, you know, I discovered, for example, which I thought, I asked Marcos to look into this, but are there any states in the United States who renew license plates directly? Okay, I just did that on Ann's car. I did the whole thing directly, didn't go to the treasurer's office, nothing. They went directly to Lincoln, and now stuff's coming back from Lincoln. Think about all the plates and all the other crap that has to be delivered and moved around and all this other stuff, and then if I got, want the same plate, they have to send it out to Miller to get it. The other alarming thing is that the DMV is practically shut down in Douglas County. I think the closest place for us to go, I'm not sure, is Highway three seventy and Forty-Eighth Street. You mean to get your driver's license? They're doing it central locations, oh, Zane, you know where they're doing it? Probably next door to that. Where? Hundred and sixty-eighth and Dodge. Oh, well, if you can believe that.
That's not central for all of us.
Wow. No. But I mean. It was what I heard, that's what it's going.
It's only miles from my house.
Another measure of their figures. Okay, well, listen, let's talk about putting, getting together, 'cause we're kind of doing it a little bit today. But I think we're at the end of the discussion, now we've got other business, but I think the other business has to leave. I wanna, I wanna thank Mike Gorki for what he has done and what he is doing. He does a remarkable job, pretty much unsung and unlike, I mean, I didn't mean to say that.
No, no, it's part of the job.
In it? Thank everybody for the contributions, and Joe, we're very fortunate to have him as the finance, the numbers guy, so. Joe and Mike are eight-year guys. We're clicking along, so thank you all very much, and if we, if we need. What time's the next committee?
Two.
Two? Okay, is, okay. Where's that gonna be?
Here.